This is an appeal in the matter of Duffy and Birmingham City Council.
Mr Joseph.
My Lords, good morning. I appear to be a learned friend of Mr Lehman appears to be respondent. It seems to me the first matter for your Lordships to deal with is whether I should be allowed to run this.
I think we'll hear what you say about that, but we anticipate proceeding with the whole hearing and dealing with that in the judgment rather than taking it as a discrete point.
You'll understand that from Lady Justice Asplin's order, it's appropriate that I should raise.
Yes, absolutely.
So I'll deal with it very briefly, if I may, because I have had a helpful conversation with my learned friend before this hearing. I don't see him objecting strongly to running this appeal. I do say that the concession that was made by my predecessor was wrong. And I also say that for the reasons given by Lady Justice Asplin in her order, this proposed appeal raises a series of important points of practice and principle which, in my respectful submission, this court should rule on, whichever way it decides to rule. And for those reasons, I do say that it would be right, in these circumstances, for my client to be entitled to run the appeal. Further, a very brief point is that the prejudice in my respectful submission to my learned friend's client is minimal because they have known all along, right from the get-go, the position that we took about the absence of the certificate on the bill. And so it is not as if this was raised for the first time before this on the judge, or indeed that it's raised for the first time here. So unless I can assist you any further on that very point, I propose to proceed. But I think your Lordships have the point that I make.
And we're not saying that you're right, but we're not saying you're wrong. We all hear the argument.
And it occurs to me, my Lord, that if your Lordships are against me on the substantive issues, one way in which your Lordships may choose to dispense with this appeal, dispose of this bill, is to refuse me permission. I don't say that with any enthusiasm for obvious reasons, but your Lordships will be familiar. In the Pittilas and Grant case, what came across to me is that the learned judges decided to allow the points to be run because they thought that it was right. If they had thought that it was wrong, maybe they would have refused permission, who knows? But in my submission, if your Lordships consider that the points I'm running substantively are correct, then it would be right for the appeals to proceed. My Lord, thank you. Your Lordships will have seen my grounds for appeal and my skeleton argument. As I observed, and as indeed as Lady Justice Asplin observed, they all stand all four together. I make no secret of that. Whilst there are seven separate grounds, what this case is about is this. If the law of costs could be represented by a stick of rock, the words 'the indemnity principle' will be running down the middle of it. It is as simple and straightforward as that. The indemnity principle has been a fundamental point of principle in the law of costs in this country for a very long period of time. I detailed in my skeleton how long it is, but it's at least 100 years, if not longer. And it is perhaps encapsulated best by the Bailey case and by the decision of Lord Justice Henry, which has sent shivers, if I may say so, down the spines of solicitors throughout the country ever since that decision was written. Because, of course, his Lordship said, if you sign a bill of costs, you certify that the indemnity principle has been complied with, you do that automatically. The court trusts that signature. It trusts it because you are an officer of the court. And if you breach that, it is a very serious disciplinary case matter. I can take your Lordships to the decision, but I suspect you would have read it.
Forgive me.
If you sign a bill of costs, you certify automatically?
Correct. Yes, it is part and parcel of the signature on the bill. And that's for a number of reasons, my Lord. The main reason is because of what the Practice Direction says. That the certificates that are given, and the certificate that I complain about in this case, is mandatory. It's not optional, extra. It is a mandatory obligation.
So why don't we treat as done that at all?
Well, because we've had no evidence at all as to why the box was not ticked. For example, my Lord, supposing...
Does the box need to be ticked?
Yes, absolutely. Because the Practice Direction says so.
Where?
My Lord, if I could take you to my skeleton, please.
Yes.
It starts at page 16. I cited paragraph four, which is on page 70, Rule 47.6.
Yes.
And your Lordship will see it's headed commencement of detailed assessment proceedings. 47.6.1: Detailed assessment proceedings are commenced by the receiving party serving on the paying party. A, notice of commencement, we don't need to trouble ourselves with that in this case. B, a copy or copies of the bill of costs as required by Practice Direction 47. And that's the part that I focus in on, because if you then go further down in my skeleton, please, my Lord, I have set out the relevant provisions of Practice Direction. And it is, again, on page 18, about halfway down. Practice Direction 47.5.21. The bill of costs must, I emphasise the word must, contain such of the certificates, the texts of which are set out in precedent F, of the schedule of costs precedents annex to this Practice Direction as are appropriate. And then I've quoted those schedules. Precedent F: Certificates for including in bill of costs. Appropriate certificates under headings one and two are required in all cases.
They are, but the certificates are included, aren't they?
But they're not ticked, my Lord.
Why does it say that they need to be ticked?
Well, can I take you to the supplemental bundle, please?
Can we just be clear? What precedent F does is it contains a number of certificates, doesn't it, certifications?
Yes.
And the solicitor has to choose which ones to put in the bill?
In certain cases, yes. Some of them are mandatory, some of them are not.
What?
Well, can I take you to page 29 of the supplemental bundle, please, my Lord?
Yes.
This is the certificate that is served on us. I sort of throw that, and you can see the tick, the bill is both accurate and complete. But the next box is not ticked.
But they've included, the certificate is there, the solicitor's included that certificate, and it's got their signature?
No, my Lord, no. It is deliberately not ticked. There are two boxes on that form that are ticked. The first is the bill is both accurate and complete. The next one is no payments have been made by any paying party on account of costs included in the bill. That's an option. That there's an alternative, all the following payments on account have been made.
Why do you say it's an alternative? You say it's mandatory?
Well, I say that the box that is not being ticked, the second box down, that is a mandatory obligation because of the Practice Direction and Schedule F, the precedents.
Forgive me, this is a bit circular. So what precedent F says is appropriate certificates are required in all cases. And you agree that the one referring to the indemnity principle is an appropriate certificate?
Yeah, it is a mandatory, it has to be ticked.
It says if it's a legal representative. If it's a litigant in person, they don't need to include that?
They do. They do. Because, again, what the... Again, please, back to my skeleton.
I see.
Practice Direction 47, it says, I've got to this bit, appropriate certificates under headings one or two are required in all cases. All certificates, all certificates must be signed by the receiving party or his solicitor. So it does have to be ticked by anybody who's certifying this bill.
So that has to be put on any bill?
Yes.
And it's there?
Yes, my Lord, yes.
And there's a signature. So why does it need to be ticked?
Because if you don't tick it, you're not certifying it.
Why?
Well, my Lord, at the risk of being slightly impertinent, if you don't tick it, you are indicating that there's a reason why you're not prepared to tick it. And when we took this point in the points of dispute, one would have expected a response to say, if there was no problem about this. Thank you very much for your points of dispute. We made a mistake. Here is the revised certificate with the box ticked. Because this business about certifying compliance with the indemnity principle is and has been a fundamental issue in the law of costs for over a century.
So can I just stay with page 29 a moment longer?
Yes.
So we have the first one that's ticked, then the second one which isn't ticked and you complain about. And then you get two alternatives. So no rulings to be made or the only rulings. So one of those should have been ticked?
They should have been.
And that's fatal to?
Well, my Lord, in my submission, I will accept that that is not fatal, because that's not part of the indemnity principle.
But where do you find in the rules a differentiation? You say, look, you find in the rules that you have to include certain things in a bill of costs, and if you don't, there is no bill. Well, this is something that should have been ticked. So why isn't that equally fatal?
Because it doesn't affect the indemnity principle. That's the issue. This is a case that the compliance with the indemnity principle is so fundamental.
And where do we find anything in the rules indicating that differentiation?
My Lord, in my submission, it is a matter for the inference of the court to draw that that was the intention of the rules committed. Because the Bailey case in particular was so seminal when it came out. It was confirming what had been said for so long, and it explains, if it needed explaining, the consequences of an officer of the court signing a certificate which was subsequently found to be untrue.
And just staying then with the bit you complain about, suppose that had been ticked, what would it have meant?
It would have meant that...
Just to look at the language, you have some square brackets in respect to parts of the bill, the costs claimed. So are you supposed to cross out that bit?
Or you could cross it out, or you could put in parts two, three, four, and five, or whatever you want to put in. I mean, that isn't the issue, my Lord, in my submission. It's the fact that the certification...
Just to understand, so if that's been ticked, it would have said in respect to parts of the bill, the costs claimed. What would that have meant?
It would have meant that the bill as a whole complied with the indemnity principle.
Yeah.
And the significance is so important. In the Bailey case, the learned judge was saying, we start with the signature on the bill and the certification it gives and the consequence that it gives. So we know that, for example, if the retainer letter says, I'll charge up my trainee at £100 an hour, we know that the bill will not claim anything more than £100 an hour. Your Lordships will be aware, the Jenpride case is the case where, unfortunately, solicitors sometimes breach that by claiming more in the bill than they were properly entitled to. That is a very serious matter.
But in this case, we have that certification, don't we?
No, my Lord, no, we don't.
Because it's page 16 of the bill. Page 15 sets out hourly rates, and then page 16 says rates are claimed in line with the claimant's retainer. And then it certifies that the bill is accurate and complete. So there is a certification that rates are claimed in line with the claimant's retainer.
So why then was the box on page 47 not ticked?
Well, that's a raised question, but the fact of the matter is that the fact of the matter is that there is a certification. And we have to read this document. We would construe any other document like that before. Quite straight. It's fairly simple to say that although perhaps by error they've not ticked the box, the solicitor is giving the certificates. They've included the certificate. They have to choose from the menu, don't they, which certificates to include? They put it on the document. It's apparent that they are certifying indemnity principle as being complied with by virtue of page 16. And they've signed at the end, certifying the bill is accurate and complete. And as you say, it's a fundamental aspect of the effect of a bill, that it has to comply with the indemnity principle. So why doesn't one construe this? If the solicitor came along and said, no, I wasn't certifying that the indemnity principle had been complied with, I think one would say, well, that's not right as a matter of construction.
Well, my Lord, I respectfully disagree, because firstly, the Practice Direction in my submission does require that certificate to be given. In the point of statement in the points of dispute.
So it also requires the certificate you wrote, given in relation to interest. You say that doesn't have... So what the rule requires isn't enough, you say?
Because we have case law, we have Bailey, we have the ACB, AAC decision, and so on. We have case law that is with this. And the absence of any explanation either at the time or afterwards when this point was raised is highly significant.
Why should that matter in this sense that in your logic, if you don't tick the box, that's that?
Yes.
And then it really doesn't matter whether they explain it or not? If it all turns on what explanation might be given, that suggests it's a matter for the court to think about in the exercise of its discretion, which is not your case?
No.
So we have to proceed on the basis that the result would be the same if, when you put in your points of dispute, they'd come back and said, no, 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 it was just simply an error and we always meant that we were complying with the indemnity principle?
Well, they didn't do that.
No, but why should that matter on your case?
Because it raises a very serious concern that this bill, there is some reason why the solicitor will not certify that this bill complies with the indemnity principle.
And I follow that you could deply that if you end up arguing about whether the certificate should be set aside. That would be a matter of discretion. But your point is it doesn't matter, whatever they say, the thing is fatally flawed.
My Lord, my case is exactly that, that it is so fundamental. It isn't an error of procedure, as my learned friend would say, it is definitely cured. It has deliberately not been addressed by the person who signed the bill. No explanation has ever been given as to why that box was not ticked. It would have been a very simple matter to write back to us after the points of dispute to say, terrible, sorry, we made a mistake, here's the revised certificate. But they never did that. They've never explained.
But it would still be void?
It would still be void.
So maybe it would matter if they wrote back saying that or not?
Well, my Lord, if the error is corrected, if it is a simple mistake, we forgot to tick it, then of course it could be corrected. It could be corrected. That's the purpose of points of dispute in a sense of raising issues. But if you then, if you do nothing, in this case, you go off to the court and you get a default cost certificate without telling the court that there's a problem with the very bill that you served. And that's where the fundamental nature of the whole exercise comes in. That we have the various decisions about the importance of the indemnity principle. And we have Mrs Justice Stane's decision, which I expect is not binding on this court, and which wasn't, the operative part of that decision was not dealt with in the appeal, where she said, I don't know who signed this. And because I don't know who signed this, that's a serious error, because we can't tell if there's a problem with the bill who we should be asking questions of, and if necessary, against whom, there ought to be disciplinary proceedings as envisaged by Lord Justice Henry in Bailey. Now, we have, if you like, a flip side of that calling here, where we have the solicitor, we know who it is, but she's not even given a certification, I say, that the indemnity principle has been complied with. And if that's the case, it's exactly the same point that was raised in the first instance decision before Mrs Justice Stane, where Mrs Justice Stane said, this I will not put, this won't do. And if we didn't have the Sainsbury case, the Bailey case, and so on, then I doubt very much whether I would have a case before your Lordships. But we do have those cases. And in my submission, if your Lordships were not to deal with this in the way that I say, you would firstly be overruling Bailey, which in my respectful submission, your Lordships can't do. The Supreme Court is the only entity that could do that. I mean, no disrespect to your Lordships. And secondly, you would be driving a coach and horses through the established principle, as I say, that runs through this fictional stick of rock that I have postulated before your Lordships. And it's a bit like, I say it's a bit like this, it's a bit like the England and Australian cricket teams going out onto the pitch and not bothering to take some stumps with them. And how would we ever know whether there was a correct LBW decision, for example? Or it would be like putting on a performance of Mars Eight Symphony without bothering to book a choir. It's as fundamental as that. And it can't, in my respectful submission to my Lord, be dealt with by saying that there are other parts of the bill that might get there, because there is no explanation at all as to why that box was not ticked after we took the point, after we raised the point, which of course was after the default cost certificate was obtained. Because those points of dispute are draft, they're not points of dispute, they are merely draft points of dispute. You cannot put in points of dispute after you've got a default cost certificate.
You applied to set aside the default cost certificate?
We have, my Lord, yes.
Yes. But that was the first stage which the other side knew you were taking the point about the lack of certificate.
I believe that's the case. May I just take instruct, and I'm pretty sure that's the case? My Lord, I'm instructed that the issue was canvassed in correspondence.
We've got the correspondence, in the email exchanges.
Yes, your Lordships have. The issue was canvassed in correspondence, and then then there was the application to set aside when it couldn't be agreed that the default cost certificate should be set aside.
That is, electronic bills, they don't have tick boxes, do they?
I'd need to check, my Lord.
And what happens in an electronic bill is that the solicitor will choose the certificates. Just put the certificate, and it says, I certify, and then the certificates are in there. And then there's the electronic signature, as it were.
And also, they're probably the box... I have got an electronic bill on my computer. If your Lordship gives me minutes, I can help you with that.
When I looked at it, I couldn't see any tick boxes.
I'm afraid I can't remember. I see them all the time, and it's not something that I tend to... I get instructed later when I see some stuff.
Your whole case, it seems to me, a non-certification is based upon the failure to tick the box. And there's no reference in the rules or in any of your cases to come to tick a box, is there?
Well, my Lord, there is, the Practice Direction. There is a reference, that's the whole point. The Practice Direction 47 is, in my submission, very clear.
It says they must be signed.
Well, my Lord, there. Again, if you look, please, at my skeleton, where I've quoted. Appropriate certificates under headings one or two are required in all cases. We're talking, I take your Lordships' word about the electronic bill, but we're not talking about the electronic bill, we're talking about paper bill.
Yes.
And this isn't some technical issue which I'm raising, if I may say so. This is a really important point. We've never had an explanation for this. It would have been a simple matter for the solicitor, for the solicitors to write back and say, thank you for your comments, we can help you, we made a mistake, we should have ticked the box, here's the revised certification. But they never did that. They've never explained why that box is not ticked.
But as my Lord said, that doesn't go into the question of validity, does it?
Well, in my submission, it does. Because of the fundamental nature of the indemnity principle in the law of costs, it's impossible to envisage how a cross-judge would start the process of assessment of the bill of costs without first having that certification. To say that it would elongate every detailed assessment is the biggest understatement that I can come up with this morning. Because the court starts from looking at the signature, from trusting the signature of the officer of the court. It's the General Byrne case in particular, but it's also Bailey. And it says, well, I know that in relation to item 25, there's a claim for one hour of time at £250. I can be sure that one hour at least was spent on that issue. I don't have to investigate whether in fact only half an hour was spent on that issue, because we trust the certificate of the officer of the court. And that's why it's so fundamental. Because otherwise, you'd be there for months examining each and every item, saying, I wonder if they actually spent three hours doing the list of documents? I wonder if they spent 25 hours doing the witness statement, and so on.
But why isn't that covered by the certificate that it's accurate and complete?
Well, it's not covered because the rules require both certificates to be completed.
Forgive me, though, your argument is that you'd be left wondering whether or not the bill was really accurate and complete, but you have a certificate and the solicitor is accurate.
Well, in which case, why do the rules distinguish between the two certificates? Why are there the two certificates there? There must be a reason for it.
Well, because as the example you gave earlier, it might be the case that the rates set out in the bill are higher than the rates that have been agreed with the client.
Yes, which would be a breach of the indemnity principle.
Yes.
A serious breach. Jenpride.
But in this case, we have the certificate. Page 16, the rates are in line with the claimant's retainer.
But why is the box not ticked? That's never been answered. There must be an answer to that. And it would have been such a simple matter to have dealt with. And it just has not been dealt with. And there must be a reason for this. And it is fundamental. This, in my submission, is not a proper bill.
Can I just run through the argument? You say this is 47.12.1.
Yes.
The court was set aside on default cost certificates for receiving parties not entitled to.
Yes.
You say they were not entitled to. And that is because, going back to 47.6, that says detailed assessment proceedings are commenced by serving notice of commencement and a copy or a copy of the bill as required by the Practice Direction. And we see in that same bit of the rules, a reference to Practice Direction 47, dealing with the form of the bill. Therefore, you say the bill has to comply with the requirements as to form in Practice Direction 47?
And those requirements are couched in mandatory terms.
They are, and there are many of them.
Yes.
So following the argument so far, any failure to comply with any of those requirements must be fatal.
I've already accepted that that may not necessarily be the case.
But how, in terms of the rules, can you make the distinction?
I can make the distinction in this case because of the mandatory words. It says must.
But that's true of lots of these rules. If you go to Practice Direction 47.
I mean, take five point ten, the title page of the bill must set out the full title of the proceedings. So if you get the title wrong, that's fatal.
Well, my lord, my case doesn't rest simply on the rules and the practice direction, it rests on the case law.
So it isn't the case that following through the rules. You conclude that anything that doesn't comply is not a bill?
No, because one would always want the court to take a practical approach to these things. Now, we have a variety of cases, I've referred to them already. We don't have a case that says if you fail to put the right case number or the VAT number in, that's fatal. Of course we don't, because the court, of course, is going to take a practical approach. And also, if you had that sort of dispute, you would expect it to be capable of being corrected very quickly. But in this case, it was raised as soon as we felt we could and it was never corrected, there's never been this, there's never been an explanation. And that's why we say that is fundamental. And I say, I accept that the rules say what they say, but this one is couched in mandatory terms. And because of all the case law, it is fundamental. And it does mean that the court should conclude in this case. That failing to give that fundamental certificate is an inherent defect, which is not a matter of procedure. And when you look at it through the prism of the importance of compliance with the indemnity principle and the absence of explanation. Then you have a serious problem in my submission, because with the application for the default cost certificate. That is a without notice application. And importantly, as I've explained in my skeleton arguments, the court doesn't get to see the bill. The court gets a one, it's a one-page form, which is completed by the solicitor usually. And which is put into the court, as I said, without copying the bill. So the court never examines the bill, the court never sees that. Again, because it trusts the certificate on the bill. And if Mrs. Justice Stain was right, and in my submission, she was right. To strike out the bill because she couldn't identify the person or the solicitors refused to identify the person who'd signed it. Then this court, in my submission, should also strike out, should essentially strike out the bill. Because it's not been properly certified, that we haven't got to first base, as they say, we haven't put the stumps in the ground. We haven't bothered to take a cricket ball out to the pitch, we haven't booked the orchestra, doesn't matter what it is. And that's why we're here. So all of this is like a pack of cards, which collapses at first base, in my submission. And it is not right, therefore, that this default cost certificate should stand, it must be set aside as of right. It is not a discretionary matter. Because otherwise, it would, as I say, it would drive a coaching horses through all of the previous case law, all of the. Rules and practice directions and it would make no sense at all. My lords, unless I can assist you further, I hope I've made the point that I need to make.
I think you have. Yeah, just let me check one thing.
If I could just make this further observation, my lord, we do not want a situation, in my submission, where any officer of the court. Thinks that he can get away with serving a bill that does not have this signature, this confirmation on it. And that would be a very serious departure from everything that has gone before.
Could I just ask, there's a decision in the authorities bundle from Islam Judge Leece, I mean Chadring. Chadring Islam, do you want to say anything about that? You just say it's wrong?
I do say it's wrong, my lord. May I just have a moment? Well, it's wrong in the sense that any suggestion that this is a matter for discretion as opposed to mandatory set aside. That's the bit that I take issue with and as I hopefully said in my skeleton arguments. This is the issue which your lordships in my submission need to deal with. Because there are these two limbs of forty seven twelve. And it's, as your lordships will appreciate, it's very similar, if not identical, to the provisions to set aside a default judgment. There's no material difference. And there are circumstances in which a default judgment or a default certificate must be set aside as of right. And circumstances where it's a regular exercise and a discretion exercise. The point I'm making about the Chadring decision is that any suggestion that this comes within discretion and not mandatory is wrong. That's the point I seek to make about it.
I was just thinking about the analogy with default judgments. You wouldn't, would you suggest that if you get something wrong in your claim form. That it necessarily follows that the proceedings are nullity and that a default judgment therefore goes automatically?
Well, I'm not sure I'd be prepared to go as far as that, my lord, I think it would depend on what the defect was. I mean, I do say that there could be circumstances in which. After the default judgment, the court looks at the claim form and says, well, there's no way that somebody was entitled as of rights to a judgment based on this call. I don't think I can give your lordships examples. But I'm not prepared to accept that that would, as a proposition, that would be wrong. There may be circumstances in which it's perfectly proper for a default judgment to be set aside because there was some defect in the claim form. For example, what happens if the defendant's name was incorrectly, or there was a wrong defendant? And that could be a fundamental issue that would cause the judge to set aside the default judgment as of right.
I mean, I'm just looking, if anybody wants to look, it's CPR sixteen point two one. The claim form must, among other things, contain a statement of value. If it don't include a statement of value, is the claim form nugatory such that. A default judgment is itself nothing?
And my lord, is it part sixteen?
Yes, sorry, yes, sixteen point two one. And it, or sixteen point two two, if the particulars of claim are not contained in or self in the claim form, the must state. The particulars of claim will follow.
Well, it's the same point as I made before about the indemnity principle, the court always has the power under the overriding objective to. Look at all of these provisions, whether they be mandatory or not. I mean, if I can give a slightly different example, on an application for relief from sanction. That application must be supported by evidence. But the court will hear applications to relief from sanction, which are made orally at hearings without evidence. Because it has the power under the overriding objective so to do. So I hear what your lordship says about, I don't think I can answer that question because I say.
Quite a long way from what you're on.
It is, if I may say so, it's a very fair question, if I may say so, but I'm not sure I can really answer it. But I do say that there would be circumstances in which a claim form was found on the application to set aside the default judgment. To be so significantly defective that the judge says, I'm sorry, you were not entitled to this judgment. And I don't know what they would be, because your lordships put me on the spot.
I quite follow, we have not, in the skeletons or elsewhere, been rehearsing.
It's a very fair, I don't criticise, it's a very fair analogy. Because what we're trying to do is interpret the rules and we're trying to look at what the court should do. But we do that by looking at rules themselves and we also look at the irrelevant case law. And that's perhaps the better point for me to make in my submission, that, as I say, we don't look at this in total isolation or in a vacuum. We look at what the courts have said over many, many years about the importance of this issue. And when you put that into the melting pot and stir it round, in my submission, you come out with the answer that this was a defective bill right from the start. And if it's defective right from the start, you can't have a default cost certificate.
Yeah, can I ask you one other question, which is, I think this is referenced in the skeleton, CPR three point ten is a.
Yes.
A purely general provision which says where there's been an error of procedure, such as a failure to comply with a practice direction. It doesn't invalidate any step. Why is that not applicable here?
Again, Bailey, all of those cases.
It's the significance of the indemnity principle which takes you outside three point ten.
That's right, and also, my lord. There really ought to have been an application by my lord friend to deal with this, if he thought this was an error of procedure. There really ought to have been an application with an explanation. And the court will only use three point ten if it's just in all the circumstances to do it. There are some notes in the white book about three, what?
Yes, no, I understand that.
I'm sure your lordship's seen.
But the burden of three point ten is, in general. If you fail to comply with something in the rules or in a practice direction which says you must do X, you don't do it. Doesn't mean that what you've done is annulity.
No.
It doesn't mean it's of no effect, it means it's defective, but it still has effect and then the court can do what it. It thinks just in the circumstances, it gives the court discretion to remedy the error or to say, well, you can't have it or whatever. But you say this is a different type of case where it is annulity.
That's right.
Yes.
Can I give you, your lordship, an example of how three ten could be used? And it happened, I'm giving a bit of evidence, which I apologise, but it happened in a case in which I was involved in in about two thousand and eighteen. The, I was acting for the receiving party. And we had given a series of extensions of time for service of points of dispute. No points of dispute had been provided. So my instructing solicitors applied for and obtained a default cost certificate. The mistake they made was this, the case was in Liverpool. And they went off to the senior court's cost office to get the default cost certificate. And my opponent complained because they said, you're in the wrong court, shouldn't have done that. And in Liverpool, I said to the learned regional cost judge, it doesn't matter, it's three point ten. Because the process for getting a default cost certificate in the senior court's cost office and in Liverpool were identical. And the learned judge agreed with me, he said, I'll use three point ten to correct that error of procedure. That's an example, and I deliberately use a cost example because we're dealing with a cost case. That is an example in my respectful submission, where the learned district judge was right. If there was indeed an error of practice, an error of procedure, he was right to do that. There was some debate, I will tell you, between him and I as to what would have happened if my instructing solicitor had gone off to the. Southampton District Registry or to the tax tribunal or somewhere like that to get what they wanted. There was some debate about that, which I deflected by saying, well, fortunately, he didn't do that. And, and this is also important, my lord, the evidence, because evidence was given, was that this was an inadvertent mistake. My instructing solicitor did not realise that the case was actually in Liverpool, he thought it was in London. He thought it was in, what was in the Queen's Bench Division. So he was right, he thought he was right to go to the senior court's cost office. It was a genuine mistake and nothing was, there was nothing that was done that was intended to obtain an inappropriate advantage. Now, I'm not saying that the absence of the tick was dishonest, let me be quite clear about that. But it's never, ever been explained. And that's the point, that three ten, in my submission, is not a basis in these circumstances in which the court could use. To deal with the, in inverted commas, error, it's far more important and significant than that.
Could I ask you about another aspect, whether or not your argument fits in with them? Forty seven point six. Detailed assessment proceedings are commenced by the receiving party, serving on the paying party. Notice of commencement. And B, copy or copies of the bill of costs. So two distinct documents.
Yes.
Identified separately.
Yes.
And then forty six three, a copy on whom a notice of commencement is served. Is a party to the detailed assessment proceedings.
Yes.
So it's the notice of commencement that is identified there, not the bill of costs. So they're commenced against a party, the notice of commencement is served, even if a bill of costs isn't served on them?
And that could just be the case.
So if we now have to go on to forty seven point nine. The paying party and the other bill, the detailed, any other party, two of the data of assessment proceedings. May dispute any item in the bill of costs by serving points of dispute on receiving party, every other party. The period for serving points of dispute is twenty one days after the date of service of the notice of commencement. So the, so that the, the timing and the requirement to serve the. Points of dispute is related to the notice of commencement. So. Why in that case is it an answer to failing to supply. To serve the points of dispute, but there's a technical deficiency in the bill? When both being a party to proceedings and the obligation to serve the points of dispute. Is not related to the bill?
Well, my lord, it seems that this is a matter for the rules committee. Because there is that law rule, I think it's.
Look at the rules as they are.
I appreciate, I appreciate. I'm not really able to assist in terms of how many times it would be appropriate to serve. Detailed assessment proceedings on anybody who's not the paying party. I don't know how often this issue arises.
This applies to the paying party as well?
The paying party's received the bill.
If one looks simply at the rules, and I follow that you would say this may not capture the essence of it. But if you go on to forty seven point nine four. That says the receiving party may file a request for a default certificate if. The period to serving points of dispute has expired and the receiving party hasn't been served the points of dispute. So the relevant trigger there is the period for serving points of dispute expiring.
Yes.
And if one takes forty seven point nine two seriously. That period expires twenty one days after service of the notice of commencement and it doesn't say anything about the bill.
No, because on the receiving, on the paying party, the paying party gets the notice of commencement and the bill and other things as well, documents. Bachelors, that sort of thing. But also, what it doesn't say, my lord, is parties can agree an extension of time and they do. And the court grants extensions of time all the time. So if, for example, the parties have agreed that the period in paragraph two is extended by twenty eight days. They cannot then go to the, on a without notice application to the court. they cannot then go to the, follow that notice application to the court.
That's dealt with in, that's dealt with in other rules.
It is, it is, my lord, yes. But my lord was, I think, looking at a rather sort of strict and self-contained view of the rules, and I'm it sends drawing to your Lord Chip's attention that that isn't actually the way that the rules work. Because we do, we do, we do look at things practically. I mean, it will be unthinkable, if a firm's solicitors have agreed an extension of time, it would be unthinkable for them to then go off to the.
That's, forgive me, that's entirely different thing. The point here is that the obligation to serve a point of dispute and the right to a default cost certificate is based upon the timing, service of a notice of commencement. And one can see nothing in here which requires a technically valid bill of costs to have been served.
Well, I think your Lord Chip, my lord, would agree to disagree on that, but.
Well, where does it appear in this, in this regime? It's not based upon the service of, in some senses, a technical, technically valid bill of costs. Now, obviously, there must have been a bill of costs in order for there to be a point of dispute.
Yes.
But it's, it's the timing and requirement of so serving, it's not in any way based upon the bill of costs, it's based upon the notice of commencement.
Well, I accept that, but I take your Lord Chip back to the provisions which I've identified as to the necessary parts of the bill, the mandatory certificates and all the rest that we discussed earlier. And it isn't simply a question of looking at that in isolation.
Do you agree that even if the bill is technically deficient in the ways you've identified, in no way does that on its face prevent the scheme in the rules mopping?
Well, in one sense that may be. But again, it's all circular, it goes back to the fundamental nature of what we're doing.
Outside the rules?
Yes, I mean, what would happen, my lord, if somebody served a piece of paper that said, my costs are a hundred thousand pounds?
Well, then you would serve a point of defence saying that that is completely hopeless.
And what would happen if somebody didn't do that and there was an application for a default cost certificate which was granted?
Then you applied, set it aside, and you inevitably succeed.
Indeed, but in my submission, you'd succeed on the mandatory ground, not the discretionary ground. That would not be a bill possible.
Why, why does it matter? Why is the mandatory ground, why isn't the discretionary ground perfectly sensible and works within the rules?
Well, the reason is this, if a if a default cost certificate has to be set aside on discretionary grounds, the court has then found that the default cost certificate was regularly obtained. It's the same as a default judgement, that the judge, that the court, that there is a wealth of differences, I'm sure your Lord Chip's know, between a judgement which is regularly obtained and one that is not. So one that's obtained in accordance with the processes, that the court starts from the proposition that it's a valid, regular judgement and you, the defendant, must persuade me, the judge, that there are discretionary grounds to entitle you to have it set aside. If it's different, if it's, for example, nothing was served, then you get your default judgement, then it's set aside as a right and it has a relevance as to costs, profit reasons, because.
It also has a relevance as to how much the defendant has to put forward a seriously arguable case.
Exactly. It is, there are, there are very significant differences between the first ground and the second ground in forty seven point two. They're very serious, very significant differences, yes.
But forgive me, a paying party who receives a notice of commencement and receives a bill knows that they have twenty one days in which to put in their points of dispute. Why would they not put in points of dispute if they've had the commencement and the bill? Even if they have the points of dispute? Because you say you haven't, you haven't put in the right certificate. What's the problem?
The issue is, as I said in my skeleton, why is a bill not a bill? That what was served on us was not a bill. And that's the issue, we say it was not a bill. It's going out to the cricket pitch without the stuffs, without the cricket ball, the orchestra, without the choir.
Can I ask you some other examples? If you look at Practice Direction forty seven, paragraph five point two, tells you what the receiving party has to serve with the notice of commencement. So there's a particular form for a notice of commencement. A copy of the bill, and then there's various other things, copies of fee notes of counsel, experts, written evidence, and so on and so forth. Suppose you have a perfectly proper bill which is signed, complies with the indemnity principle, has all the certificates and so on. But you've just missed off one of the fee notes of counsel. Does that mean you have or haven't started detailed assessment proceedings?
Strictly speaking, you haven't.
So you would say any failure to do with any of these things means you haven't started, so you can't get a default cost certificate?
No, I don't say that, because we don't have lines of authority like Bailey and so on that say if you don't serve counsel's fee notes, you've got to serve it properly. We don't have that, that separate. We do have a special set of.
So the difference is this, that if you, if you get an M two fifty two and there's a fee note missing, you put in a points of dispute, and one of the points is you've claimed for fees for cancer, but you haven't included the fee notes. And then that then goes forward. And if you don't do that, you're still at risk of having a default cost certificate entered against you.
If you don't cause a point of dispute.
But if the defect is the failure to sign this certificate, then it's nullity and you can't go down. The procedure never starts.
That's right, my lord, if I can see.
I think, I think I've understood very clearly.
If I could assist you a little further to say that, to dealing with the cancer's fee note issue, the probability is that that would be dealt with in correspondence. Thanks for your papers, thanks for the notice of commencement. You've missed out this fee note, could you please send it to us?
Yes, but the thing is, if you don't do it within the time that we've got, the twenty one days or whatever it is, then you could have a default cost certificate entered against you.
That would appear to be the case, and as I say, we don't have a series of authorities for the last hundred and thirty years.
Understood, thank you.
And as my lord says, I think he's understood the argument very clearly. I think we'll rise for a moment.
Yes.
Mr Jarvis, we concluded we needed trouble, Mr Meehan. Given the exchanges between us, you probably won't be surprised by that. So we will dismiss the appeal. We're not going to give reasons now, those will follow in the normal way. And at the stage that you receive the draft, we'd be grateful if you would seek to correct our typing in English, that that obviously isn't an opportunity to re-argue the case. We'd be grateful if also at that stage you would seek to agree in order dealing with consequential matters. The most obvious one is obviously costs. And we're not proposing to deal with the costs of the appeal today. Can you please address costs to whatever extent you can't agree at the stage that you receive the draft? And we would expect to settle such points as remain in the order that we make. The last thing, out of an abundance of caution, is that I think it's the case that as the rules now are, your time for any attempt to apply to the Supreme Court or to ask us for permission to go to the Supreme Court might run from today. Out of an abundance of caution, we would extend that time so that the time runs from the date on which the full judgment is handed down.
Thank you, I'm very grateful, thank you.
So unless there's anything else, we'll leave it there. Thank you very much for your submissions, and thank you very much, Mr Meehan, for your great discussion and argument.
Court, rise if able.